The meeting of the Exeter Region Cooperative School Meeting for Tuesday, May 17, 2022. If you would please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which sustains on ordination under God and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the delay, folks. Our non-public meeting ran a little bit later than we thought it would. So we're going to start with our introductions. We'll begin with Kim.
My name is Kim Casey. I'm the East Kingston Representative of Exeter Cooperative School Board.
Scott Dennehy, Brentwood Cooperative School Board.
Travis Thompson from Stratum.
Helen Joyce Chair, Stratum.
David Slavka, Exeter.
Val Kensington.
Bill Goethe, Exeter.
Kim Meyer, Exeter.
Our administrators. Mike.
Mike Monahan, Principal at Exeter High School.
Eris Hershey, Interim Principal at CMS.
Sharon Wilson, Principal at SST.
Michelle Votto, Director of Exeter Adult Ed.
Molly.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Andres Mahir, Director of DIJ.
Thank you very much. Joanna, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. Before we have public input, we're going to open it up to our student representatives tonight so that they can have their presentations. We can ask any questions that we might have and then afford them the chance to be able to leave early if they'd like to. So we're going to begin. Our Exeter High School Representative, Sophia, is playing in a delayed tennis match tonight, so she could not join us, but we wish her well. And from CMS, we have Kayden Cirillo and Jarek Lab. Did I pronounce that correct? Labby, thank you. I'm so sorry. All right, so why don't we have you, if you folks would like to take the microphone there at the end of the table and come on over and do your report for us? Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. I like your suit. Thank you.
You look very spiffy there.
Well done. Well done.
Good evening and thank you for having us. We are Jarek Labby and Kayden Cirillo from the 7th grade. We are here to share our experience at our May 5 kindness assembly.
We started our Holocaust unit in January and learned in our classrooms the tragedy and significance of the Holocaust. Sadly, bullying and hatred are still seen today even in our own communities. The Holocaust is a clear example of what happens if hatred gets out of control. It's our job to ensure that it doesn't happen again. In April, we invited Governor Sununu and Ms. Cadi Preston, a Holocaust survivor from New Hampshire, to our kindness assembly. Governor Sununu, with the help of Ms. Preston and her late family, passed the New Hampshire School Mandate of Holocaust Education by the time students reach 8th grade. The governor challenged our generation to make a difference in society.
Our assembly was organized by Mr. Fisher, Ms. Wall, and Ms. Wong, with ample support from Ms. Pierce, Mr. Arrender, Ms. Taylor, and CMS administration, and many other staff members. We served as two of the 12 student ambassadors to the kindness day. It was entirely student-led and even featured a chorus performance in Hebrew. Ms. Preston told us that she had no room for hatred in her heart. Considering what she had been through, that was incredibly inspiring, and you could tell the impact she had just by looking at the audience, which was full of captivated students and adults.
She was understandable, funny, and relatable to today's happenings in the world. She spoke on how our age group has the power to change the world for the better. Ms. Preston mentioned social media, how an older generation made it and didn't have the responsibility for it, and so now that responsibility comes down to us, the youth.
One of the biggest student takeaways was that you always need to treat other people with respect and kindness. We are more alike than we are different, as Ms. Preston reminded us.
Thank you to everyone that supported this awesome day, especially Principal Hershey and our teachers. Thank you to Governor Sununu and Ms. Cadi Preston for their time and words. And finally, thank you to the school board that continues to support projects like this one in our school and community. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, my comment is you folks did an amazing job, and I want to commend everyone who was involved in this because kindness towards others is something that we all need to practice, no matter how old or how young we are. So we thank you for sharing that with us tonight. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from other board members?
School board, can I just introduce? Kevin Fisher is our chorus teacher. Can you just stand up so they can see who you are? He is an amazing educator. We are so lucky to have him at CMS, and he is solely responsible for this initiative and just does an amazing job, so I just want to put a face to the name.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us. Wonderful. Well, it takes leadership as well, so thank you so much for being here, and thank you, Eris, for pointing that out to us. Wonderful. All right, well, thank you so much, guys, and we probably won't be seeing any student reps next month because school will have let out for our next meeting, so we wish you a wonderful summer. And next year, 8th grade, big time. You'll be taking over the building, huh? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And our representative from SST is Gabrielle Louie. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Thank you. Thank you, parents, for bringing them tonight. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Gabrielle Louie, and I am currently enrolled in the Automotive Technologies Program at SST. I'm a senior at Newmarket, and tonight I was invited to share my success in the automotive field. When I first started SST, I didn't really know what to do with my life. I was kind of clueless, just liked skateboarding a lot, and I don't know, I didn't really have a clue of where I was going in life. And I had the opportunity to go to SST my junior year, and I looked at it as a way to get out of school, because, you know, wasn't really, you know, interested. And I went, and I met my wonderful teachers, Mr. Lobdel and Mr. Yerjoe, and they gave me an opportunity and a career path. And I was really invested, and I've learned so much about the automotive field and the industry. And it's my second year now, and they helped me land a job at McGee Toyota of Epping.
Great.
And I'm being sent to Lakes Region Community College by my dealership next year.
That's great.
And I'm being trained by a master technician and learning, you know, big jobs and ways to make money, and I honestly love it. It's probably my biggest passion, and I'm really thankful for everyone, and I'm thankful for SST for accepting me and giving me an opportunity and a career in life. And I'm in debt, really. That's just the biggest way to put it. And thank you for everyone for having me and hearing me this tonight.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for sharing your success with us. That's wonderful, and you're graduating this year and moving on to community college as well is wonderful, so we wish you all the very best in your endeavors. Are there any questions at all from the board or further comments?
Gabrielle, you're a great example of, you know, there's so many different career paths that students can take.
That's right.
And you say you're in debt, but you're not going to be in debt over the next four years, so congratulations.
Yeah, we were just talking about this in our home recently, about how there's such a demand for people in the trades and perhaps not necessarily following the traditional four-year college path. And those folks are being very successful, and they're doing very well financially, I might add, as Travis just said, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just do what you want in life, and, you know, you'll be rewarded.
Absolutely. Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for joining. And you're welcome to stay, or if you need to leave, you're, I know you want to stay for this scintillating meeting, but, you know.
You can write some work.
Oh, okay. Well, you go home and have some dinner. There you go.
I'm invited to something tomorrow. What is that?
I'm going to be invited to a scholarship presentation when my parents will be here.
Nice. Congratulations. That's wonderful. Good for you. All right. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You have a good evening, and good luck to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All righty. We will open up our meeting now for public input. Is there anybody who would like to speak or have any questions or comments? Yes, please. Thank you.
I've never spoken in this little tiny room.
There you go.
It's scary. Anne Sorber from Exeter, and I just had a couple questions for clarification that I hope maybe can get answered at some point. So I have two sons here at the high school, and they informed me last week that they received a survey during their advisory period that they were asked to complete. As a parent, I was not made aware of the survey, but I did ask and receive what the questions were on the survey. And the questions had to do with weighted GPAs and basically what students input about these weighted GPAs were, what their thoughts were, how it affected them, and it did affect the courses they chose, et cetera. And so I guess what I was a little bit confused about is because, I think it was like on May 6, Superintendent Ryan sent out an email about the Curriculum and Philosophy Committee and how there is a study group studying the issue of grading and weighted GPAs. And specifically in that letter, it said, "While different models may be referenced in these conversations, this working group is not seeking to eliminate the weighted GPA system, alter the calculation of weighted grades, or remove academic levels," which I was very happy to read. So I guess what I would like a little bit of clarification is, if that's the case, then why were students sent this survey specifically about weighted GPAs? Honestly, do students understand weighted GPAs? I mean, I asked my senior, who, besides band and computer science, he takes all AP and honors classes and has been throughout, and literally this is his comment, I'm like, "Do you understand how these work?" And he said, "I don't know. Harder classes bring up GPA, lower go down." So the thought that, like, freshmen or sophomores really understand what weighted GPAs mean, I'm kind of curious about that, and I'd like to know, like, what's this data going to be used for? Like, and what's the purpose of it? How is it going to be used? Who's accessing it? So these are just some concerns I have, and I'm sure parents of upcoming middle school or middle schoolers who will eventually be in high school are curious about that also. So that was just my little, I'm, thank goodness my children are forthcoming, so they could tell me about this, because I had literally no idea that these questions were being asked, and I think my sophomore didn't fill it out, because she's like, "I don't know what the questions meant." So, anyway, that's.
Thank you, Anne. I think what I'd like to do, if you wouldn't mind, we'll answer your questions certainly, or have our administrators do so at the end of public input, but we'll come back to that. Absolutely, I've written down your questions. Thank you for sharing that. All right, are there any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am. If you could just state your name and the town you're from? Thank you.
Linda Allard, Exeter. I also have a junior and a freshman here. They did not fill out the survey because their advisors didn't advise them to, or didn't not advise them to, or don't know what their advisors do. My daughter's advisor also forgot to take them to the fair that they had this year for service groups or volunteer organizations that you had here, and I didn't understand how that can happen. But my comment to the GPA is, I just went on the world tour of North and South Carolina for colleges, and there were quite a few schools that told me specifically, and I know some of you sitting here have visited the same schools that I visited, AP courses and honors courses make a difference. One school told us that they take the students' classes, they take their grades, and they recalculate the GPA, weighting your AP class higher than your honors class. So I know some of you have heard this as well from colleges you went to visit. I just got introduced to the college tour. Honors classes and AP classes make a significant difference, and they made sure they told us or handed us papers telling us how they will calculate our GPA. So I wanted to make sure that everyone here was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Linda. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak? All right, I will declare public input as far as presentations from the public over, so we'll come back to Anne's question earlier. And as board members, we are not involved with the delivery of surveys, but I would ask our administrators, either Mr. Monahan or Dr. Ryan, to address Anne's questions. Why were the students sent the surveys, and what will the data be used for?
I'm happy to answer that question. Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay.
So as we indicated in the letter, there were two surveys that were administered. The first was in 2020, prior to the pandemic, and it was to gather input from our students as we always would when it has issues that has to do, have to do with them. The second went in 2022 because we picked it up again after the pandemic, and it was student-driven in 2020, and it's still student-driven now. We have a student on the work group, I believe I named her in the letter that we had sent home. And at our first meeting in March, we had asked Mr. Monahan to work with Mr. Soller back at the school to administer that survey to students to get their input on their thoughts about the weighted GPA system, the way that it's calculated, do they understand what it's used for? And the data that we received back was pretty, was pretty helpful. And it's funny, too, it was not very different from the similar questions that were asked in 2020. But what I'd rather do than go through the data tonight, because we do have, we just had our last meeting last Thursday, we have information that's going to be going out to the community. I'm going to send the results of that survey out, so you'll receive that, so you'll be able to see the number or the percentage of students that actually do understand what goes into a weighted GPA. One of the advantages, too, Ms. Allard, is we have the person who's in charge of the recalculation process from the UNH Admissions Office, who's been at both of our meetings, has explained the recalculation that they also do when students apply to school. The AP, the honors, as well as computer science, and any dual enrollment course receive a higher weighting than any other courses. So we have students who are over at SST, which is really where this was driven, with students who are attending SST knowing that their grades were going to be affecting their GPA but not helping their weighted GPA because the weighting of those courses are different from AP and honors courses here. And so that's where the group really began. And what we learned was, if it's a dual enrollment course at SST, the weighting doesn't matter because UNH, as well as a number of other schools, are already going to weigh that higher than if it were not a dual enrollment, because it carries college credit, which is what dual enrollment means. So we're looking at this with a bit more of a logical perspective of, if it's carrying college credit at SST, that means you're already in a college-level course. How is it that it can't be at least weighted college prep? Which was the question that we left with. So what I'd like to be able to do is send the information out, as we did with the letters and introduction to the work that we had done in March. We want to bring back to this board in June more information and an update. We really wanted it to go to Curriculum and Philosophy Committee first, because that's where it originated in the conversation in September. We're going to have a discussion this evening of whether we're going to have that meeting in June.
Right.
So it may be a September meeting. Now that I have the microphone, I want to clarify and ensure and confirm that this group, Mr. Monahan's with me, and he and I have had this conversation, that this group is not looking to change any part of our GPA structure, our weighting, our leveling, has nothing to do with that. We're a group just looking at, are all students being afforded the same opportunity to have success with the weighted GPA system? So there may be some courses and some students who are, there are obstacles getting in the way of students being able to participate in courses that have a higher weighting, and that's something we really want to take a look at, and that's what this group really is doing. But there's no, there are no decisions coming out of this group. It's an information gathering group, and we absolutely wanted to have the student perspective. It's the only reason we asked them to complete that, that survey that Mr. Monahan and Mr. Soller had them do in an advisory, I believe, last Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And.
Have you been to survey the parents, too?
Are you going to survey the parents?
That's a question I'll ask the group.
I, to address Linda's concern, two things. I would like you to, the concern with regard to the kids not having filled out the survey or missing, if you could privately contact Mr. Monahan about that to let him know, you know, who was involved in that, I think that would be the best approach for you to use with regard to that. I can tell you, and I'm only speaking for myself, not for the rest of the board, as a former teacher of AP and honors, I totally understand where you're coming from, and I totally know the rigor that goes into AP and honors classes. So I appreciate everything that you shared tonight with regard to wanting to maintain that as far as weighted grades are concerned, but again, I'm only speaking for myself. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments at all on that? Yes, Dave?
David, you said in 2020. Is it the same survey we gave in 2020 that they just gave to students recently?
No, there were some questions that were different back in 2020.
Now, was this, was this during the COVID situation, the pandemic?
Do you remember, Mike? When they, I think they administered that in February of 2020.
Yeah, before then.
It was just before we closed out school for the pandemic. And so those, those data were put, were put away, and we haven't looked at them again, literally until last week. So we didn't use, we're not using any of that data back in 2020 for, for anything that we're doing now.
Okay.
Having two-year-old data.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate, and we appreciate your questions and your comments tonight. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have the public minutes from April 19, 2022. Are there any corrections or omissions with regard to those minutes?
I have.
David?
Yeah. Let me see here. It was, it was one of the motions in a vote.
Okay.
Actually, it was a nay, and they had it down as, it was eight, past eight zero. Where is it? Mr., number, number eight, if you go down, it says, "Mr. Hall made a motion to raise," oh, no, sorry. It was about hiring during the summer months. It wasn't eight zero, because I voted above given.
You know, I thought that was, I thought you, I thought that was a, an eight to one vote on that.
Yeah, or seven to one.
Seven to one, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
So I was, I was a nay on that.
There you go.
Excuse me, Ms. Sorber, I'm sorry, we're going to need to leave that open, because it's a public meeting. Thank you. I know it's noisy, I'm sorry.
Okay. So thank you, David. Okay, so we've changed that to a seven one instead of eight zero?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any other corrections or omissions? All right, then, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the April 19 public minutes as amended. Thank you, Travis. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. We're making sure, Kim Kimberly, we're making sure I do that tonight. There we go. Okay, great. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. All right. We have the non-public minutes of April 19, 2022. Are there any corrections or omissions on that? All right then. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Up. It's second, Kim. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you very much. Okay, great. All right, we're going to move on to our administrator's report, and we will begin with Dr. Ryan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I will be brief. I know you have a non-public plan for the end of the meeting, and we want to make sure that you all get home in time for tip-off. I have a couple of items I wanted to bring up. First is the general assurances piece. I included that. I did receive a panicked email from a member of this board, named to be kept anonymous of, "You don't expect action on this," because I think it's a sixty page.
Now, I didn't word it that way.
I didn't say it was you. So the general assurances are an annual occurrence where we share with you the rules, regulations, and policies that govern our federal grant process. Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA, and I believe Perkins and Adult Ed. So in order for us to meet all of the requirements of general assurances, we have to share those with you. You have to have the opportunity to review them. And then by June 30, the Chair and I must initial and sign those, saying that we will abide by, we'll assure the, the New Hampshire Department of Education that we'll abide by all of those rules, regulations, and policies in there. And so we wanted to give the board ample time to review this wonderfully-written piece of literature.
Very lengthy, but that's okay.
As well as give us time to work through the policies that are included within the general assurances, which, as a board, will take up in our June meeting. We do have a PP and C and Curriculum and Philosophy meeting scheduled for June 7. However, that runs in conflict with Scholarship Night here. We will need to have a PP and C at some point prior to the board meeting so that we can go through those, those policies.
So we'll pick another night.
So we'll just pick another, just for PP and C, and just for those policies that Heather Murray will work us through.
All righty.
And then we can bring them to the full board that way when we're comfortable. That gives us also ample time to answer any questions that you have regarding the general assurances. Okay?
Thank you.
So no, there's no action on that this evening.
Wonderful. Well, the fact that I had to sign off on those, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to get it all read before tonight, two days, you know, it was kind of difficult to get that done, so I do appreciate that.
I was a, I was a hard teacher, but I wasn't that hard.
We'll take a closer look at that for our June meeting. Thank you very much. All right.
By reading this, you mean that we lay our eyes upon the paper and acknowledge that there is English written on it?
Because. It's very difficult, I know. Yeah, the language can be difficult.
I'm not sure. Beyond that, I'm not making any promises.
All right.
Okay. We, I sent to you under separate cover, only because they continue to change, and we have a number of students who are doing some amazing post-secondary, having post-secondary experiences, but I wanted to at least share with you the report I'd received from about 10 days ago, the list of acceptances of our class of 22, which continues to grow more astonishing in terms of the number of acceptances at the number of top colleges and universities. I highlighted the number of small Ivies and Ivies that are included, as well as those that are included in the top 20. The Top 10 Dinner tomorrow night is going to be truly a really fantastic event, given that there are, I believe, four students who are accepted to Ivy League schools, two Harvards, one Cornell, and one Dartmouth, but the two who were accepted to Harvard just. Harvards, one Cornell, and one Dartmouth, but the two who were accepted to Harvard chose to turn that down because they want to go to MIT. My goal is to try and change their minds. So just from the college perspective, which we know, we have multiple experiences in a post-secondary. Gabriel's a great example of that. We also want to be able to celebrate all of our students who are moving on into the trades, who are moving into the world of work or business, as well as those that are going to be serving us in the military. So I know Mr. Monahan, Mr. Soller, and the rest of the staff here are so proud of the class of 22, and they're continuing to, to have students enter that information into these, the students' Naviance accounts of what their selections are. So we can continue to be proud. And I want to note, too, that this graduating class was a full-blown two-years in the pandemic. And there were a number of students, thousands, tens of thousands of students who didn't apply to go to college last year because they wanted to defer a weighted year, which means the applicant pool for most of our colleges and universities in the United States is way up. And the percentage of students being admitted is way down. Yet our students continue to excel and do better. I don't remember a time when this number of students were accepted at this number of colleges, particularly those in the Ivies are the high end. So we're super proud of the work that everybody's done, and most especially, super proud of our kids and their parents for enduring and, and working to, to this level of success. I also wanted to, I'll, I think Ms. Wilson will talk about a meeting with the governing board, as well as some of the other items from SST that are very exciting, as you saw, Gabriel, and other issues that are, occurred over at SST, which are exciting. And I, I do have three nominations this evening.
All right. Before we get to the nominations. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ryan or comments about what he's presented thus far? Yes, Dave?
That's good because I'm right next to you.
Hi, Dave.
Now, again, I have a senior who's, you know, going on to university level, and I have a rising junior who's doing the same thing, and we've been doing the college tours. My question is, like you're talking about, do we have like a percentage of how many are going on in the senior class? I mean, do we track that?
We do, and we, we will, it's just that right now, it's not a fine, they're not finalized yet. So students, either students haven't made their final selection, there could be students who are waiting to see the, the amount of aid that they're going to get to determine whether they're going to be able to go right away. So that is, that is information that we do have available to us that we're going to make available in September, because we also want to be able to bring to you our, our percentage of students who are completers. And right now, the College Board is using a six-year completion term. COVID really threw a curveball, but those who completed a four-year college/university in six years is considered completion. The percentage who went on to and completed a two-year school, and so we want to look at the last couple of years, that's part of our balance scorecard. So we'll have that information for you when it becomes.
So we're able to, so we were able to track trends, if there's big spikes like the last couple of years.
We sure are.
Now, like you said, we talked about, you know, the pandemic, everybody's tired of it. Now, I mean, there's a lot of surveys and everything going out there and studies where realizing the younger students are really where it's going to be impacted as well. So I think that's why we really need, you know, some type of metrics to evaluate going forward. Because again, it's not so much, yeah, it was two years, but they're already in high school, but it's the younger students, you know, the freshmen's and.
Sure.
The middle school and even the elementary school, which, again, it's coming out every day, that this pandemic's really taken a toll where they're behind. So again, it's a good tool, so.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you. David, nominations?
So we have three nominations this evening. I did email to you in the packet the resumes of our three candidates. The positions to which we'd like to nominate these three individuals are Assistant Director of Special Education at Cooperative Middle School, Curriculum Administrator at Cooperative Middle School, and Assistant Principal at Cooperative Middle School, the candidate you were able to meet and interview with this evening. I'll note for the public that the Policy Personnel and Communications Committee did meet, interview the two candidates, one for Curriculum Administrator and one for Assistant Director of Special Ed last week. And so I would offer those three nominations to the board at this time, and I would recommend that we do an individual motion for each candidate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll start then with the, a motion to accept the nomination for Assistant Director of Special Education at CMS. Do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second on that? Thank you, Bob. All right. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, two abstentions, thank you. All right. The position for Curriculum Administrator at CMS. Do I have a motion to accept the nomination?
So moved.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And the last nomination for Assistant Principal at CMS. Motion to accept the nomination? Bob?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Scott? Thank you. All right. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. All right, sir, you will, you can take it from here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce to the public for the first time, though they're not physically here, Elizabeth Dimmick-McLaughlin as our next Assistant Director of Special Education, Karen Berg as our next, as our first Curriculum Administrator at Cooperative Middle School, and Clyde Perez Castaneda as the Assistant Principal at Cooperative Middle School. I appreciate your support for these three candidates. I know that they'll do a fantastic job joining Drew Baerstau and the rest of the team over at CMS. We have great, great plans for this team, so thank you all very, very much. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. All righty. So we will move on to our principals' reports, and as usual, we will begin with Mr. Monahan at high school.
Good evening. Just a few, few items I wanted to highlight this week. We're going to be having a job fair here at the high school on Friday. Bunch of employers are coming in. Julie Knight, who's one of our transition coordinators, set it up with the extra chamber, so it's a great opportunity for our kids to, to meet some employers. They'll come in during their lunch period, walk around, and so anybody out there who's son or daughter needs a summer job, it's a great opportunity, and it's definitely a, a buyer's market for jobs right now, so. Kids are going to have their choices. In line with that also, towards the end of April, we had a really, really successful college fair, also had some employers there at that. We had 55 four-year and two-year schools at the college fair. I want to commend the, the Counseling Department, they did a really nice job of meeting individually with all the juniors in preparing them for that, so they can go around and, you know, how they ask questions and get information from colleges, so it was really, really successful. And I did want to point out how many of those college reps were just so, so impressed with all of our kids, not just our, not just the older kids, but, you know, freshmen and sophomores were allowed to go as well, and they were super impressed with all the kids. You know, they asked really great questions and, and did a really nice job. And it's not a surprise to me, but it's really nice to, to hear that from folks who come into our building. And lastly, I did just want to commend our Merrill Writing Contest winners. The Merrill Writing Contest has been going on in Exeter forever, and there's three areas, fiction, nonfiction, and poetry. In fiction, Daily Delaney McLinch was a first-place award winner. Carly Castidley was second. In nonfiction, Breann Daly was in first. Hayden Bullens was second. And in our poetry area, Brand Daly was first as well, and Lauren Bernard was a runner-up as well. So a great job to all those students in our English department as well. And end-of-year stuff is happening, as Dr. Ryan mentioned, Top 10 this week, academic awards next week, Scholarship Night, all the stuff's coming, so trains leaving the station, so we're looking forward to it.
A lot of excitement. We have four board members whose children are graduating, so I know they're going to be very busy in the next several days, and thank you, Mike, so much for, for that. And I'm looking forward to the Top 10 Dinner tomorrow evening as well. Thank you for inviting me, appreciate it. All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Monahan or comments? All right, seeing none. Eris, you're on for CMS.
Sure. So when I wrote the principals' report, I only had about a third of the event dates, so I gave you an updated list of the, all the things coming up that I just wanted to highlight. Besides our amazing orchestra and chorus and band concerts that are coming up, we had a celebration of learning yesterday, where the kids researched Greek mythology, gods and goddesses, and then they dressed up like them and did presentations. It was amazing. It was really, really fun. This Friday, we have an eighth-grade dance that the kids have completely planned, designed, decorated, they're doing all the decorations, they're doing all the music, it's going to be so much fun, so that's 6:30 to 9:00 on Friday. We have a ton of field trips coming up, which is great because we haven't been able to take field trips with COVID, so this is, the kids are really, really excited. So everything from hiking to Newcastle Common, they're going to Harvard to visit the museums, and they're even doing some community service at the Hampton Beach and cleaning up the beach as part of an initiative for Hawk Helpers. We have the Greek Olympics that the sixth grade has done in past years that'll be coming up, and the eighth grade has also decided they really want to do a lip sync competition and variety show to, to show their talents, so that'll be fun. And then each grade has a field day that's listed, so I just wanted to give you an updated list of all the fun things happening.
Thank you so much. I was so impressed, too, with so many of the academic programs that are going on at the middle school, just a cross-section. I love the Latin, a former Latin student, I really enjoyed reading about those, and please extend our, our congratulations to Ms. Barone on that. Thank you. Are there any questions at all for Eris? Any other comments? Yes, David?
I ask every, every meeting. How's the sub, how's the sub thing going?
Yeah, good question. Thank you.
Let's see, this week, we're doing good. We haven't had to, we were in the auditorium a couple times, but very minimal. So it's definitely getting better. We have more and more subs coming in, so that's great.
Did that bump help? Remember how we raised the money? Did that help at all?
I, yes.
Good.
Yes.
All right, excellent.
Yes, because there's an increase, so I would say yes, definitely.
All right.
Yep, so it's better.
All right.
Good, good to hear. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Eris. Sharon, SST?
Good evening. I know Dr. Ryan said that I would talk about the governing board, but I believe that Mr. Hall will probably talk about that. We did discuss enrollment is 7:45 for next year at this point, which is very good, we're very happy with it. In addition, we just found out today that Keene State, they have an articulation agreement with all CTE programs, so that if a student were to gra, complete the CTE program, they can earn up to eight college credits at Keene, and they have just reauthorized the articulation agreement for another five years. So we're very, very excited about that. We'll go through 2027. In addition, our Perkins allocation is going to be up next year, another $28,000. We are moving along in our Portrait of a Graduate work, and we've been working this year on students defending their learning, and three of our programs are doing some small portfolio defenses in front of their advisory team, their advisory boards. I know Careers in Education did it last week, Auto is doing it in a couple of weeks, and Animal and Plant is doing it next week. So I'm really excited and very proud of those teachers for taking the lead. I actually had a sneak peek with Animal and Plant at the Business Roundtable, where the kids brought their portfolios and just could explain what they did, what competency it meant, and it was really beautiful to see their enthusiasm and their complete engagement in their learning. Tomorrow, we will be down the hall here, thank you, Mr. Monahan, giving out $42,000 in scholarships. And just to wrap up, our Right Start Preschool is closing out the year in style. We had our tea party, which is absolutely incredible, and we also had our art show.
Thank you, Sharon. I'm putting Bob on the spot, I don't think he was prepared tonight to talk about the, the meeting, but would you like to just give us a?
I'd like to say a couple of things. First thing.
Sure.
I think the best words said tonight about SST was from our guest. The student was wonderful.
Yeah.
And that's exactly the opportunity that students need, that maybe colleges and their guides, but they really want to go to work, and that's it. So I, I start with that. The second thing is the pre-engineering program. I, I attended the Capstone presentations, and Mike was there, and David, and it was, it was wonderful. And it's, it was dealing with space and, and the future of space, and, you know, way beyond my science understanding, but it just shows you what the, the students are learning today and where they can go. And I tell you, the universe is, we're going to be there, there's so much to do.
And that leads into our second project with NASA.
Yes.
Because we are continuing that partnership, and those presentations were just leaps and bounds above last year. So the, the growth in that program with our teacher, Mr. Greenwood, just very inspiring.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. Any other questions for Sharon? Yes, Kim?
Just, no, just a comment to say, I attended the Careers in Education Portfolio Defense, and it blew me away. I mean, they're unbelievable. I forgot I was in the room with high school students defending their portfolio, just the breadth and depth of knowledge around the career and the experiences. It was so impressive. So I, I had asked if one of the students would come and share, because I think everyone needs to hear, and I'm hoping that maybe we can get her at the June meeting, we'll see.
Yeah.
Because she's a senior. But thank you, it was, it was very well done.
And if not, I'm sure that somebody in Animal and Plant would come, because that program's doing an extraordinary job with it, too. And that's been really difficult work for the teachers, because working one hour a month with someone for support, it, it's, it's been tough, but SST teachers are very humble, they don't realize that they already do so much of this each and every day, and that really what they were looking at was taking that draft of work and upgrading it and putting it into a system, and then giving some of the ownership over to the kids. So I'm not surprised at how fantastic they're doing, but I think they have been a little surprised.
If I can just pile on SST for two seconds, I want to commend SST for expanding their relationship with ICL Auto, which is, you know, owns Saudi Stratum, Porsche, Honda, Dover, and Honda North, which is in Norwood. We met with them, established, or reestablished a partnership where we have students who are going to be doing co-op and internship there, not just in their automotive base, but also within their marketing department and their accounting department. Some students that are going to obviously go and, and learn the trades, as well as the fine art of selling automobiles. And so the reputation of SST is sterling enough for this organization, they reached out, they have a dealership in Dover that needs some assistance with collision repair, and knowing that we don't have a collision repair program, asked SST to provide the names of some students who would be willing to learn the trade and work at Dover and learn the collision repair. Keep in mind that Dover High School also has a CTE program with an automotive program, and they contacted SST. So that, that says something about the reputation of SST in our community. The other is working with Exeter Health Resources and expanding our partnership with them and our Health Science Technologies. We're hiring a new Health Science Technology teacher, and again, the hospital and the associated physician groups wanting to work with the Health Science Technologies Program at SST. So a lot of great work going on over there, and again, despite COVID, Sharon has done an exceptional job for the three years that she has been there, resulting in a lot of these pluses coming our way. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that as well.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. And last but not least, Michelle, welcome back.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Votto. I'm the Director of Exeter Delta Ed. I just wanted to just tag along. It's not on my written report, but just that as a district and as a regional district, serving the community, alternative learning pathways are really the key for our students to be successful, providing multiple opportunities. And the fact that we, in December, I provided you data in regards to students that actually come to Exeter Delta Ed to either recoup credit, to either change their pathway to graduate, whether that's the HICE, also known as the GED, understanding, too, that the, the scope of COVID over the past couple of years has really provided some difficulties for our students over the past two years. So the fact, I just applaud the board for really, you know, supporting SST and programs like the Adult Ed program, because you'll hear those stories at graduation in regards to students completing. So just thank you for that. As to my board report, I will share with you that we met on April 20th, myself and one of the teachers. We met with Hutchinson in New Fields and at their operational plant. They had discussed with us their need for English as a second language with 15 new refugees, because refugees are coming into our company now, our country now. And, and as you know, our workplace is in dire need of employees. So we have worked out a partnership, and we start Monday, May 23rd, teaching 15 refugees on campus at Hutchinson, along with their Health and Safety Environmental Manager, Gary Smart, and their HR Manager, Dale Whitaker. And we'll be working with them till Friday, September 16th. That's the duration that we're working with. And then we're going to revamp, recalibrate, and continue that partnership. We look forward to doing that more now that hopefully COVID has, we thought, gone away? Maybe? No, I don't know. But anyway. So with that, and I did provide you information at the last meeting. I know I was not here, but our graduation is on Wednesday, June 8th, and we look forward to graduating over 40 students. And they range all from the ages of 17 to like 50. So it's going to be really cool. And again, we'll have three students that will be presenting that evening and sharing their narratives. In addition to that, we do do summer programming. So again, students that are either achieving, have an academic gap, whether they're regular high school students or students that are adult learners that need to continue their education, we're kind of one of the few areas in a region that actually offer summer programming. So we will be doing that for our ESL students, our HICE students, and we have an Adult Diploma Program. So we're really excited about that. In addition to budgets, so that lovely literature that Dr. Ryan was talking about, our grants don't get approved until you sign that. So we're looking forward to you signing that, that document and looking through that. Other than that, that's the extent to my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle regarding Adult Ed? Looking forward to graduation. It's always a highlight of the year. Wonderful. Thank you. All righty.
May I just share one more piece of news? I know you love it when I do this.
Sure.
I wanted to inform the board that next week will be the last week that Kayla Moore serves as our Administrative Assistant in the SAU office. Kayla's going to be joining her husband's family's business and supporting them, doing marketing and media design for, for the family. So we're going to wish her the very best. We're going to miss her. She's done an excellent job preparing your, your packets, as well as those of six other boards, and, and helping keep the SAU office running smoothly. Sharon Gullidge, who is the current Receptionist at Cooperative Middle School, will be joining us next week for one week of overlap and then be full-time with us on June 3rd. So we have that search underway. We'll be replacing her over at CMS. In the meantime, while Sharon is training with us and working at Central Office, Kristen Gibson, who is our Receptionist at the SAU office, will be filling in over at CMS. So it'll be an even exchange, and Kristen gets to go back to where she started at CMS and visit with some old friends and assist them there in this transition. So I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Thank you. And I want to publicly commend Kayla. She has been just outstanding in that office. And when I heard that she was leaving to work in private industry there, I was just so heartbroken, because she, I, I work constantly with Kayla, whether it be with regard to the, the agendas, whether it be with regard to other issues for the co-op. And she knows how sad we are to see her go. So if you could just pass that along and tell that we commended her. Any other questions or comments with regard to that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right. And thank you, principals. Appreciate it. All right. Our DEIJ report. Andreas, you're on, sir?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, everyone, Andres. Before I, I highlight some things on the report, I just want to put out there the, the sad events that happened this weekend. And, you know, it's, it's sad that lives were taken and that happened. And just to put out there, I know we're all busy and stuff's moving fast. I've been to a million meetings today, and all of us have personal things going on in our lives. And at the same time, you know, hopefully on your time, on your way home from work today, you take some time to just take a moment of silence for the lives that were lost, and then also just take time to process and, and reflect on what's on your heart and on your minds. There's a lot happening. So I just wanted to put that out there, because it's sitting heavy on my heart, especially as, as we can see, that I can see with my eyes, me being the only person of color in this space, and, and why certain attacks did happen this weekend. So I just wanted to put that out there to this, you know, take time for ourselves to think and reflect on what's happening out there. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that. We appreciate it.
And, sorry, I didn't put that in the notes. It happened over the weekend.
No, no.
You know, so two highlights I just want to, you know, first is the, the Exeter High School has a DIJ Student Committee that got started by one of the, and their staff advisor, Dan Provost, is a huge support in that and making that happen. And they're getting started. You know, they showed up to the Empathy and Listening Workshop. The students showed up, and they expressed, you know, they, they shared their voices and their experiences with caregivers from the community and other educators in, in our school districts. And now they're working on, they want to learn more. You know, they've, I've met with them, and they want to have like a DIJ 101, where they want to learn about different frameworks, and identity, and equity, and isms. And that's what they're, they're trying to build, and see where, where they can help create community where everyone feels like they belong. So I'm, I'm excited to be working with that group. Another highlight is also students. And I've shared this before, the affinity space with students who identify in the LGBT+ community over at CMS. Those affinity spaces are awesome. They're powerful. You know, we've had four already, and over 60, 70-plus students show up. And when I, and, and you see the difference in their feelings, just even walking in the hallways, you know, their heads up. Every time I see them, they're pounding me. They're saying, hey, you know, I went to the, when we had Katia Preston come and speak, you know, the students were on there. They're like, hey, we're having the next meeting. It was just the excitement, the energy and the space to see in the students that I didn't see before when I first started doing focus groups and climate. So it's good to see that happening and that, where everything that's happening, that students are still finding joy in being in school and, and finding friends and, and being together. So yeah, those are my two updates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. In reference to what you said earlier, we totally understand where you're coming from. And what happened this past weekend, so horrific. We look at what you're doing in our community and working with our youngsters, no matter what, their color, creed, background, et cetera. And we appreciate all that you're doing with them. I just wanted to make that public statement with regard to you. And thank you for your extended report as well. It was very detailed. Are there any questions at all for Andreas or comments? All right then. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Finance report, Molly?
Okay. So in your board report is the major changes from the last time we spoke. So we did have about $413,000 of additional expense. That was mainly related to areas of special education and the firewall that we have talked about, the technology need. Did anybody have any questions on those expenses? You'll see a lot of supplies, because historically every year, we shut off the ability to purchase orders the Friday before April vacation. So everyone has a mad rush to get everything they need to finish out the year, because they know they have, they have to. And if they want to purchase anything after, they have to talk to me. So.
You just, do the, you do it, Molly.
So, so that's why you see the, the rush of supplies in here.
And just as a reminder, with the board, it voted up to $60,000 on that firewall project.
Right.
The cost worked out to be about 38.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't bring it in here.
That's fine.
It has some repair.
It has some repairs in there. Breakdown for Seattle.
Right, right.
It's about 38,000 to fix the problem. And we added functionality in the cafeteria with enhanced cell service for students to be able to have their phones, use their phones while in the cafeteria, but it's limited to the cafeteria. So we tried to find some compromise, which seemed to meet. I believe the students were pleased with that, Mr. Monahan, if I'm not mistaken. So.
Great. Molly, I had a question about the student transportation, $144,694. Is that due to a, a change with regard to a student need, or?
The change that, you mean from the change?
I'm not changed, I'm sorry. I meant to say the, the fact that it was in arrears $144,000.
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, over budget. So if you remember, several meetings ago, we had Dr. Bennett here talking about keeping the children in district.
Right.
So we're not paying the tuition, but because they're in district, we're paying the additional transportation for that.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Any other questions for Molly? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, well, the Chair's report will not be lengthy tonight. I just had a couple of things, and I wanted the building administrators, I'm going to send you off in just one second, I promise, but I wanted to just go over a couple of things. As Dr. Ryan mentioned earlier, our June 7th committee meeting is, we're going to be missing five or six board members that night. It's scholarship night. We have four members of our board who have children in the graduating class who may well be at that scholarship night. Bob is presenting the Wheelwright Scholars. We'll be announcing those recipients at our next meeting in June. And I know that another board member has a conflict, because I think the CMS concert, I believe, is that night as well. So a lot going on. And so Dr. Ryan and I spoke, and I spoke with the chairs of the committees. We're talking P, P and C and curriculum as to whether or not, clearly, we can't hold the meeting that night. So we're going to have to decide whether to postpone until the fall, or, as, as you mentioned earlier, David, there will be a need for at least P and C to meet at some, at some point. So I throw it out to you. Are there any other nights? Why don't we go with curriculum first? Because do you want curriculum to meet in June? Traditionally, we don't always do that because of all of the other meetings that are going on. Is, is there anything with regard to curriculum that you feel is, is something we should be discussing in June, or can it wait till September?
I have nothing pressing, other than weighted study group, weighted grade study group that we can bring in September, and the group, work group was, was comfortable with that.
Oh, they were? Okay.
Yes.
So it's just going to be an, an up till, at this point, it's an update, and you're synthesizing?
Right. And what we can do is a written update to the entire board in the June full board meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
So curriculum meet in the fall?
That works.
Okay. Now, P and C, though, is another story, because we have the policies and insurances that need to go through. So for the folks on P and C, is there a night that works for you? Our, our next board meeting is June 21st, so it would have to be before June 21st that we, I'm sorry? Monday, May 13?
I'd be unavailable. I have two grievance hearings out at Swayze Central.
Okay.
The 14th, however, would that work, Mr. Gauthier?
I'm not free on the 14th, but I'm not officially a member of the committee, but as long as the other committee members can be there. I am not, I'm free, I believe, every other night that week, but not the 14th.
Monday, the 6th work?
I would prefer to do it after graduation if we can, just because we all have so many things going on.
Right, right. I would, I would agree.
When you say the 14th, Dr. Ryan, I, it looks like I'm free on the 14th, as my schedule at this point.
No good?
I won't be here either.
On the 14th?
No, no, on the 6th.
On the 6th?
14th, I'm good.
The 14th works? Okay. So the 14th works for Kim? Does it work for you, Scott? No, it doesn't? Okay. It works for Travis? Not for me. It does for Bill? Okay.
I don't think we'll need terribly, a terribly long meeting. You will have some homework, yes?
Yes. It's the homework.
They always hate homework. It's terrible. So do you want, I mean, I, I, again, I'm not able to be there, but the 14th, if that works for three of you to be present for that?
And it's just the policies we're going to ask you to read, not the assurances.
Okay.
For this meeting.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, just the policy.
Oh, there you go.
Just the policies for this meeting.
You got a break.
All right. So the 14th, at what time, ladies and gentlemen?
You stick with 5:30?
Yep.
5:30? Okay. 5:30 on the 14th. Well, that worked well. Thank you. And I will touch base with you, Dr. Ryan, on the results of that meeting before I sign anything, or before, well, we have to do it before.
We'll do it in the full board meeting.
Exactly. All right, great. The next item that I have, just a reminder to you, that GBEX sent invitations out to each board member for a brunch on the 26th at 8:30 in the morning. They're hoping to have a good conversation with any board members who are available to be there. I know that's a tough time for folks when you're working. I know I plan on attending. I'm not sure if other members of the board, Kim will be there, and Kimberly and Bob, wonderful. They also want, want us to have an opportunity to see the kids in action in terms of in their classrooms and see what, what they're doing with these youngsters. So I think that's a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity for us. So that will be on the 26th. And I did tell them, I would remind you, if you could RSVP to Meredith, the email that she sent out, with, even if you're not able to go, just to let her know so they can plan for, for food. Oh, good. Okay. Thanks, Bill. Great. We have a contract in the works with GBEX for lease of the building that will be brought to you in June. We had a couple of items that needed to be worked out, but we think we're pretty close to a, a final.
We got the thumbs up from them today.
Oh, you did. Wonderful. So at our June meeting, we'll be bringing that contract before you for approval. And last but not least, as mentioned by our illustrious leaders here, are the end-of-year ceremonies. I have heard from a few board members, and I know you've received invitations from GBEX, as well as from SST with regard to their ceremony. So if you could RSVP, I know that at this, we're, at this point, Bob will be at the SST. Kim, you said you would be at, at the Great Bay. Unfortunately, Great Bay and Adult Ed is the same night. And we try to rotate that a little bit. So I will be attending Adult Ed. I know that there will be at least five of us who graduation. We have quite, quite a few, and, and anybody else. And if you could RSVP, too, to Ginny, she sent invitations out for that as well. They'd like to know, get a feel for how many are going to be coming. She also asked if you could let her know what your seating needs would be on the field for graduation when you RSVP to her. That would be helpful as well. And the eighth-grade send-off at CMS is at 1:30 on June 16th. I plan to be at that, if any of you can be in attendance. That's always a very emotional, it's kind of like the, I don't know if they do it in all of the elementary schools, the, the clap out, is that what they call it? You know, and they, it's really sweet. And so if you can be at that, you have the, the sheet. If you have any questions about any of those, don't hesitate to give me a yell or connect with the building administrators, if you would. All righty. Any questions on any of those? On that note, have a good evening, administrators. Off you go. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. All right.
I'll have one non-public item that I have to ask the board for when we do go into the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
That's fine. Okay.
Before I leave.
No problem.
Thanks.
All right. We have one committee report tonight, Curriculum and Philosophy. Kim? Kimberly, you're on. I didn't want to panic Kim.
Like I'm in trouble.
There you go. All right.
Yes, thank you. So we met on Tuesday, May 3rd, and we had a great overview of the new Women's Studies course and Humanities Program, which was excellent, by Sarah, what's Sarah's last name? How do you say that?
Sarah J.
Oh, sorry. Sarah J.
I believe it's Jed.
I thought you were.
Jed Razuski.
All right, there you go.
Jed Razuski, yes.
And Heather Saluto. Yeah. So it's, it's amazing. They outlined their new elective course for the fall. They have a couple of sections, satisfy social studies, and it's, it's amazing, social studies competencies. So it's really illustrative of the passion our, our educators have in terms of offering new courses that the students are asking for and interested in. And their process to really devise the course was, was quite thorough. So that was amazing. And then Ann Hadwin, Curriculum Administrator, talked about core content credit at SST. And she did digging into which classes at SST could count for core content credit, as the title of that agenda item states. And basically, at this point, she came up with biomedical science as the only course that provides comparable biology core credit competencies. But the takeaway for me is that SAU 16 is really dedicated and committed to making sure that every student who graduates, graduates with the appropriate competencies, and that we're not just giving credit or stretching things a little bit further than we're comfortable with. So there's some efficacy there, which was impressive. And this matter is by no mean settled, it, by no means settled. But as situations come up, and we'll continue to do further digging and research and determine, there's a few other courses that she's looking into right now, but that was the one that she came up with definitively. So more, stay tuned. There's more to follow on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions at all or comments for Kim on that? All right then. Thank you so much. Any older new business to come before the board? All right. Seeing none, we are moving into non-public, called under New Hampshire RSA 91- A32C. Matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person...